The sole item on the agenda tonight is the
Council on Columbia.
Background presentation, questions and answers regarding, am I too far away? Sorry. Resorting the Colonial Theater Restoration Project. I'll note for the record that Councilors Hosmer, Hamel, Haynes, Bowns, and Chini are present in the room, so there's a quorum of City Council President, and at the moment, Councilor Littman is joining us by phone somewhere.
He's here.
He's in front of the city manager there. So we'll note for the record, if you would, Madam Secretary, that a quorum is present for this meeting, and we only have the one item on the agenda. So we have what, we have an hour to, to take care of this business tonight, and if we need more time than that, we'll, we can make arrangements to do this at another time, or continue it at another time. We have three gentlemen that I've asked to join us tonight, who are here as primary, as primarily as resources, should the discussion head in their direction where they can help us, and I wanted to introduce them to you, I think most of you know them, but on the right of, out here in the audience is Justin Slattery, the Executive Director of Belknap Economic Development Council, and I'm going to ask him to make a short presentation to you in a minute about a couple of specific items, but also joining us tonight are Chris Kelly in the back of the room, back there, I think most of you know Chris. Chris is the Chairman of the Belknap Economic Development Council, and has been very active, a very active participant in the Oversight Committee process and meetings. And lastly, sitting in the front row here is old friend Gary Grolow, I think most of you know Gary, and Gary has been the, has been taken on the task of chairing the Oversight Committee, that City Council asked be formed last summer, and Gary has done an extraordinary job, if I could editorialize for a minute, in getting up to speed on all the history of the project and the ins and outs of it, as well as taking complete command and control of the process over these last six months. I think I mentioned earlier, we, we're up around thirty meetings now, I think, that Gary has chaired on this subject, so we're, we're an invaluable resource, and we thank Gary for his, his indispensable leadership on getting this project to the point where it is tonight, and as well as going forward. So, so we have representatives of the Oversight Committee, we have the Executive Director and the Chairman of BEDC itself here tonight, that are at your disposal if you have questions that Councilor Hamel and I, who are on the Oversight Committee, cannot answer, they can try to bail us out if there's something that we can't deal with, or if you have a specific question about BEDC that you would like answered as well. I was told that, you know, this was pretty free-form discussion tonight, but I was asked to give a brief presentation about the history of this project, to give you a better understanding of it, and I can do that pretty quickly, highlighting a couple of points, I'm not going to get too far into the weeds, but I stand ready, as I have before, and all of the rest of us, including Councilor Hamel, to delve into any specific detail to the extent that you would like it, like it explored as the, as occasion permits. The, I, I gave you via distribution by the Clerk's Office and whatnot, a copy of the three resolutions, for those of you who weren't on the council, the three of you who weren't on the council at the time, you now have copies of the three active, if you will, resolutions that the City Council passed over a period of several years on this subject, and, and dating back to the summer of 2015, and most recently updated in September of 2017, that detail what exactly the City Council's commitment is to the project for the record at this point in time. So if you have any questions about those resolutions, and where we stand on those, we'll be happy to try to answer that question as well. The, the, the primary thing I wanted to emphasize, and I don't want to go back over all the detail I gave you several, a month ago when we were discussing this one, made the presentation on this project, but there was something that I wanted to stress in response to some inquiries I've gotten from council members informally, and that is, at the, and I think this is critically important to understand, at the very beginning, and the very beginning was almost exactly four years ago, 2015, when Jack Dugan from, from Menadnoch Development, Economic Development Corporation was asked to give a presentation to a number of parties here in the Lakes Region about the possibility of using the so-called New Market Tax Credit Program to help finance a redevelopment of the Colonial Theater, the city was not in any way, shape, or form a part of that project as, in any formal way. But I think it's fair to say that the, the project would have never gotten off the ground if it weren't for the cities interjecting itself, if you will, in the process with public resources, and, and the critical component of that, you, I think you know that we ended up voting to lend Belknap Economic Development Council $1.4 million so that they could purchase the theater with that money from, from the Baldi family, and then we also made a commitment to put as much as $3 million at that point in time into the project as a loan. Now, the critical, critical part of that was, we said, okay, we'll loan you a total of $3 million for this project, but in return for that loan, and this was really critical, we said, we want the option to buy the theater at the end of seven years. And again, to refresh your memories quickly, seven years is a critical timeframe in this whole project because the New Market Tax Credit Program, federal program, unwinds, if you will, over seven years, and the tax credits that are gained by the investors are parceled out, if you will, over a seven-year period, so there's a very formal structure that has to be involved, has to be in place for seven years. And so we said, we'll, we'll loan you $3 million, we, the city, will loan you $3 million, interest only, but in return for that, at the end of seven years, we want to have the option of buying the theater for the $3 million, or in effect forgiving the $3 million loan. So we're going to get the theater and related expenses, related amenities, dressing rooms, staging space, rehearsal space, et cetera, for $3 million, if, if, if that's, if it is our wish to do that at that, at that time, seven years down the road. We could only lease it for seven years because that's a condition of the tax credit program. Now, what I'm thinking at the time, from doing my own research, and I want to update that to you to some extent now, was a personal observation, belief, if you will, that I think was shared broadly by the council at the time, that, A, we didn't have a first-class auditorium in the city of Laconia, and that the city of Laconia could certainly benefit from having such an amenity. Secondly, was the economic development importance, perceived economic development's importance of the theater in terms of both the city in general and the downtown area specifically, in terms of, something's got to happen to that to redevelop, if at all possible, and there've been a number of efforts that had not been able to be pulled together to do that. So with, with that motivation in mind, so what I'm thinking, based on my own knowledge, which was relatively shallow at that point in time, I'm guessing, man, if we can get a 750-seat theater on Main Street in downtown Laconia for $3 million bucks, that's a hell of a deal. And that was my informal thinking at the time, because I was thinking at the time, if we built an eight-hundred, or seven-hundred, 750-seat theater from scratch in Laconia somewhere, it would cost us a lot more than that. And from, from some basic research I had done online at that time, I was guesstimating that somewhere between probably eight and 10 million dollars is what it would cost to do such a project from scratch at that point in time. So updating that today, I can tell you that in preparation for this meeting, I was trying to update my own research, and I ran across a very specific, and I think timely, example. Just last year, York, Maine, close by to us, voters approved to build a, what they're calling Community Auditorium, 750 seats, multipurpose room, very close to what we're talking about here, except theirs is new from scratch, and, and is an addition to the high school in York, so they're building it as an amenity, it's a community auditorium, but on the campus of the high school and connected to the high school. And York is a city of 13,000 people, I know a lot of you are, so it's pretty close to Laconia in terms of population, a little smaller as well, 750, anyway, they're finished with that project now, it's online, built, open, et cetera. They paid $10.4 million for that theater, is what it cost them to build it when all was said and done. The construction cost was $9.1 million, and the rest was, was soft cost. So $9 million from, from scratch, and it's a nice theater, I've seen pictures of it and whatnot, it's nothing special in terms of aesthetics or anything, but it's very comfortable, and nice, and large, and modern, and whatnot, but it's not a, it's not a restoration project, certainly on the, on the, on the, on the scope of what we're talking about here. So what we're talking about tonight is the possibility of, again, of the city putting $5 million, in round numbers, into the Colonial Theater project, and at $5 million, I would make the argument again tonight, this is still one hell of a deal, as far as the city of Laconia is concerned, that we would be getting a $10 million theater, if you will, for half that cost, as far as what it would, what it will actually cost the, the city of Laconia, so I wanted to throw that out. Now, the other thing is, that I mentioned, and this is part of the, the history that's important, is, I mentioned that originally, we had an option to buy the theater, okay, and that was our intent, that some city council, seven years down the road, would make that final decision, to either say, pay me for the $3 million you owe me, or we'll convert that $3 million to outright ownership of the project. What changed in that regard, that's not what's operational now, now, based on that most recent resolution, which you have a copy of dated September of 2017, is we have now changed that to a guarantee that we will buy the theater, a commitment to buy the theater for the amount of, that we have out on loan to them, it's no longer an option, and the reason for that was because the proposal that we put forward from this municipality was unique, at least for this part of the, of the world, and no one had done that before in terms of a new markets program with that level of, of public involvement, tax money involvement and whatnot. And it turned out that when it, rent was, when it was, when it was run through lawyers to take a look at it, tax lawyers and whatnot, I can't dot the i's and cross the t's on this to you, for you, but the, the, the tax attorney stepped in and said, you can't do that, that the option, that, that there's some IRS regulation or something or other that said that we, that the only way we could do that was to commit to leasing the theater for 20 years, not for seven years. Why, I have no idea, and that the amount of rent that we had promised to pay was going to be considered to be very insufficient in the years between seven and 20, and so we had the option of saying, well, okay, if we want to keep the option, then we've got to, then we've got to agree to sign a lease for 20 years, to lease this thing, at a rent that was way higher than we were, that, prepared to pay, and so, long story short, at that point in time, we decided to ask the City Council to go ahead and commit to the fact that we would, we would forgive the loan to BEDC at the end of seven years in return for outright ownership at that point in time, and that, that's why we have that commitment today. And then the other number originally was $3 million, that went to $4.2 million in September, and that same commitment, you have, that same resolution that was passed in September 2017, that number went to $4.2 million. The extra $1.2 million was necessary, because, as I mentioned earlier, when the construction bids came in, in 2016, I believe it was around April 1st of 2016, the, we discovered that the cost of running, renovating the theater was a full $3.3 million higher than the budget called for, being able to spend, and so considerable time and effort and months of time were spent trying to get that budget, the project back within the original construction budget, and it turned out to just not be possible. And the, the cuts that were being proposed to get it down to the original number, the original budget, the council determined were, were unacceptable to the city in the sense that they compromised the quality of the project to the point where we didn't think it was worth doing it anymore. So we came to the city, those of us who were involved at the time, came to the City Council and said, if we want to get the theater that we thought we were going to get, we're going to have to spend another $1.2 million on it than we had originally thought it was going to, to do. In round numbers, about $900,000 of that was theater equipment, which, by which I mean staging, lighting, and sound equipment primarily, and some other construction improvements, primarily in the, in the multipurpose room along Canal Street and whatnot, was another $250,000, $300,000. Anyway, it totaled up to about $1.2 million, and council at that time committed to spending that money. So the other thing, and then I'm going to recognize Councilor Hamel, the other thing that I wanted to accentuate upfront was, going back to the original idea, the thing that made this work, certainly the city's commitment to loan the purchase money, the city's commitment to put $3 million and then $4.2 million into the project were very important, but more important was the city's commitment to become the single primary lessy of the auditorium and the related amenities. That was always the big chink in the armor, if you will, on this whole project, was how is it sustainable after you, if you can get the money together to renovate it, how do you keep it operating, who's going to pay for that, how's it going to operate, and the original concept for doing this had nothing to do with the city, it was just, it'll be done, and someone will run it, and people will rent it, and, and perhaps a production company of some kind will rent, be the master tenant or something or other, but the city was not in the picture. So the city stepped in and said, let's take that off the board for this seven-year period, and say, we will be the primary lessy of the tenant, we'll pay the rent necessary to keep the project going, to cash flow the project for that first seven years, take that off the board, let's not worry about it, all right? Now, really importantly here, the concept was, when this originally was accepted by anyone, everyone involved, was that this was being done by the city to establish a municipal auditorium, period, not to establish a performing arts center or anything else. It was, it was stated very clearly that this was to establish a municipal auditorium. We were going to use it, this was going to be a municipal amenity owned by the city of Laconia, no different than the library, the football stadium, or any other amenity we have, and we were going to view it in that context, okay? This is an amenity, period. We're not, we're, and, and we were going to run it as a municipal auditorium. That's the baseline, that's the low common denominator, okay? So the low common denominator is, in Scott's office, there's a hook on the wall with a key on it, and if the high school wants to use it for a play, or the Putnam Fund wants to use it for a concert, or, or a streetcar company wants to lease it for a, a very reasonable fee and whatnot to put on a play or whatnot, there's the key. Come get the key, sign the liability waiver and whatnot for use of the municipal auditorium, the library, whoever's going to use it, just like municipal auditoriums all over the country are used, that's the baseline. And that concept was the city's total commitment financially to running the place, at that very base level, and that very base level of financial commitment, okay? No management, no production company, no theater company, no ballets, no nothing, just municipal auditorium, it's free for most of the, the organizations that would use it here in the city and whatnot, and it's available for rent at a modest fee for, certainly for nonprofits, and even for profit-making organizations, it, it'd be available for rent at a reasonable fee, okay? Now, so that, that took the whole idea about how are we going to pay for this thing, we as a community, going to pay for this thing once it's in operation, you know, especially for that first seven-year periods, and that concept is what carried the day. Going a step further, obviously, the people who've been involved in this project from the beginning, including myself, have higher goals for what the Colonial Theater at some point in time will become in terms of an economic activity driver for the city in, in general, and for downtown Laconia in particular, okay? That may or may not happen from day one, but it isn't going to matter from a solvency standpoint, because we've got the back of this thing to that basic level that I outlined earlier, okay? Now, would we like to see a lot more activity than that at the Colonial Theater? Yes, and we have been involved, I say we, Bob Selig and I, and Bob Hamel and I have been involved in any number of conversations over the past year, with all kinds of potential people who might be willing to, to invest their time and talent in making something more of the Colonial Theater, and those discussions are ongoing and continuous. Certainly, the uncertainty involved in when the theater was actually going to get rehab, rehabbed, or when, or if it was going to get rehabbed have been a stumbling block in trying to get somebody to commit to managing it, if you will, on behalf of the city, but the goal here, I just want to make sure you're all clear on that, the ideal goal here is, is that we would, we, the city, would sublet the theater to a production company, a management company, and they would run the theater, and they would, they would book the acts, they would, knowing that they had to reserve certain dates for the, for the local community productions and plays and concerts and whatnot, but that a third party would actually come in and manage the place, book acts, take care of the, the updating and equipment and all that sort of thing, sell tickets, et cetera, et cetera, the city wouldn't have to be involved in that at all. And I can tell you from the preliminary discussions we've had with any number of entities over the past year, that at first, in order to entice someone to take up that responsibility, who has the experience and know-how to be able to do it, we're probably going to have to make them a real sweetheart of a deal in terms of, of renting it to them, you know, it'd probably, maybe a three-year lease or a two-year lease or something like that on the theater, at very little or no rent to get somebody in there on an active basis to do it. Down the road, if it came more successful, there might be other opportunities available to the city. But to, to, to cut to the, to the core on this, the hang-up is, the difference between Level One, the city operating it strictly as a municipal auditorium, and somebody operating it on a higher level is, who's going to take the financial risk for booking acts? That's what the big stumbling block is. If, if, if we want to have so-and-so come in and do a concert, and the cost for that is $50,000, whose $50,000 is it that gets put up front to pay the band to come in and play the concert? That's what the stumbling block is, and the city, through your representatives, including yours truly, have made it clear that that's not going to be the city. We've had any number of people volunteer to manage the theater if we put up the money, but a shortage of people willing to put up their own money to book the acts and be on the hook themselves for the risk of doing that. So I just wanted to, to make it clear that, that the way this has proceeded to date is, we have categorically been unwilling to take on any additional responsibility for risk as far as the city is concerned, in terms of managing the theater to some higher level of economic expectation, in terms of what kind of acts and how often those acts would be, would be booked into the theater, and how it would be, how it would be operated. So I hope that's answered those questions. I want to pause here, and first ask Councilor Hamel if he's got anything to add at this point in time.
No, you've pretty much covered it, so.
Okay, so questions on what we've talked about so far?
Mayor, you, you mentioned that we would be responsible for the baseline costs of maintaining the place over this next seven years.
Yeah, yes.
Give us some hint of what, and that's additional dollars, I'm presuming, to the dollars we've discussed.
Yeah, we, so, so we, we will rent it, from, the plan is, we will rent it from, from the developer, the space for seven years, and then after that, as I said, we'll own it, so we won't pay any rent anymore. But the, it, it's, the, the rent, let me clarify it first, is, the rent is really a circle, because we're going to loan the money to the developer and charge interest on that money, okay? Our $4.2 million, really the only means that the, the developer has to pay the rent is to char, to pay the, the interest charges we're going to charge for renting the money is to charge us rent, so we're, we're in effect paying our own interest by, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
We've got a circle here, we, they charge us, we charge them interest, they charge us rent, and it's pretty much a wash, not totally. The difference is, we pay the, the, we have agreed that it's, that the lease rate is net of, of utility cost, so we pay heat, power, light, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on top of that, which we have estimated to be in the range of $50,000.
Per annum?
Per annum? Yes. And that would be, you know, I, I mean, Scott could probably speak to, you know, how he would anticipate seeing this, you know, would we have additional employees or anything like that? I don't think we're anticipating that at all. You know, from a baseline standpoint, it's, it's perceived to be a very basic operation.
Yes, at least initially, I probably wouldn't be looking at additional employees, although we would want to have somebody who was expert with all the mechanical systems over there, who had at least general operating knowledge of the theater-related amenities, some of the, you know, the, the companies that might come in, the nonprofits in the area might have some talent within their own organization, other groups that come in like a Putnam Performance certainly would, but some of the true municipal uses, we would have to have someone at least trained and available on a, on a per diem, per event type of basis to come in and be able to operate sound lights, do that type of stuff, and then obviously, anytime it's used, you'd be having some kind of a, a janitorial service to be in, you know, to be doing cleanup after events, trash floors, bathrooms, those types of things, so some of that would be driven by how many events were occurring there.
Pretty bare bones.
So in addition to those understandable costs, there are going to be replacement parts for equipment?
Yes.
Expenses?
Yeah.
And have we done anything to guesstimate what those cost? I mean, so we're talking about $50,000 for utilities, any number for additional expenses?
We have not done that to date, no.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Counselor Cheney's finished, please?
I am, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. I, I just trying to, I'm trying to get a, a complete picture of the city's, excuse me, investment in this property, and, and to the best of, from what I can understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to loan $4.2 million initially?
Correct. That includes the 1.4 that we've already got on, on loan.
Okay, that includes the 1.4, so it's not 4.2 plus the, the original 1.4?
Correct.
Thank you. Our rent over seven years is $144,000 a year?
That's a little more complicated than that, I'll get to in a minute, but that's, that's a baseline, yes.
Okay, which, over seven years, by my calculations, I think is about $1 million.
Which will be largely offset by interest income.
Okay, and it sounds to me like utilities, at $50,000 a year, is going to be about $350,000 total. On top of that, as Counselor Cheney indicated, would be ongoing maintenance of equipment, or as the facility may need, something, patches in the roof or foundations, and something like that.
Well, the, the improvements to the building itself, until we take ownership, would be the responsibility of the developer.
Right, and I, and I assume that the developer will offer some guarantee on things like the roof and some structural elements that they're responsible for, so.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just want to, and.
Equipment breakdown, something like that, we would have to fix it, yes.
Right, so I think we're all hopeful that the funding stack comes through. If the funding stack doesn't come through the way we need it, this whole project is contingent on that being structured just the, the way we anticipate.
Yes.
We don't owe any additional money, the only investment we have is 1.4.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the misunderstandings, as I pointed out at our last meeting, was that, I wasn't very clear in explaining this a month ago, I think, was that, to date, we have $1.4 million out on loan, it's not like we spent $4 million, and now we need another million, that, we, we've spent, actually, in terms of accounting, we've spent That, we, we've spent, actually, in terms of accounting, we've spent nothing. We have $1.4 million out on loan to BEDC, so that's still an asset. The, the, but, the, the, the extra 4.2 million, or extra 3.2.8 million has not, that's just a, is theoretical at this point in time.
Okay.
We have not spent that money. Nor would we. If this whole, if something happens to the funding stack and something else collapses, then we're, we're no worse off than we are today. Our exposure today is that $1.4 million that we have, that's our total exposure right now, is that $1.4 million that we have out on loan.
And i, i, is there an interest-only payment being made to the city by?
$4,000 a month.
$4,000 a month, okay.
Yeah, which is going on, what, now, two and a half years, they've been paying $4,000 a month to us for interest.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilor Hamel?
I was just wondering, can, considering the time, if we should get Justin to?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was any questions on, on what we've covered so far.
Yeah, I, I did have another question, which has managed to escape me as I was listening to Andrew, so we'll have to wait.
Okay. If it comes back to you, I mean, I.
There may be more after Justin gives his spiel.
I just want to make sure you, I just want to make sure you all have an understanding of what we're asking, what, what the program is as far as operation is concerned. That's, you know, that, that concept, the municipal auditorium concept.
I do recall now, I, I think you and I had a brief conversation, but I'm hoping you could expand a little bit. One of my other concerns is, there are, there are other components to financing in this, at least as I understand it.
Yes.
Donations and commitments from commercial, have we, are we aware of the status of those? Have the, have the donations come in to the?
Okay, so that's what we're going to get to right now.
Okay.
I've asked Justin to be prepared tonight to address us. Now, when I, when I, a month ago, I handed out this sheet, some of you may remember?
Yep.
That had the funding stack and the expenses and whatnot on with the yellow line. All right, so I've asked him to come tonight and go through briefly for you all the other items in the funding stack, and to pay particular attention, if you would, to the donations, which totaled $1.5 million, and what the status of those are. So, Justin, could you come to the microphone, please, and fill us in on that?
Good evening, everyone, good to see you all. I think the easiest way for me to probably go through would start at the largest amount and go down, if that's okay with you all? First of all, the new market tax credits, I think you've all heard that term in the last couple of years, that is very important to the funding stack. And we are awaiting the next allocation of new market tax credits, which we are expecting, we've heard anywhere from late February to March. We've been working very closely with Mascoma Community Development Entity, or CDE, based in the Upper Valley of New Hampshire, which is seeking an allocation of these new markets, and has worked very closely with us and, and the Colonial Committee, Mayor Engler and, and others, understand our project, work with us, help advise us, if you will, on being able to secure those tax credits. Those tax credits in the funding stack right now, we're estimating at a little over $4.8 million. They are a federal in economic development incentive program for projects like this, for, for catalytic-type projects that can really have an impact in a downtown neighborhood or a rural community, or, or even in areas in the inner city that, that are, that, that can really use an injection of capital. The theater project really meets, meets a lot of the goals of the new market tax credit program. And those tax credits are typically sought by national banks, like US Bank, PNC Bank out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, has, has bought a lot of these credits for several projects in Concord, US Bank as well, in Keene, US Bank's actually been here as well to look at the project. So that's the first big key funding source. And typically, if, as we start talking through this, if you think of it as a puzzle, all these different funds come together as a puzzle, and we leverage those funds to move a project like, like the Colonial forward. Next, next funding source would be the city, which the mayor and you all just covered at, at $4.2 million. From there, excuse me, from there, we would move to historic tax credits. We have sought historic tax credits for the project. That is a federal program ran, run by the US Park Service. And it is a credit, a federal credit of 20% for projects like the Colonial where you rehab a building and you restore it and you preserve it and meet the guidelines of the Park Service. So we have designed the project, working with our design team, working with state preservationists and, and the National Park Service, to meet the requirements of the historic tax credit program. There are three parts to that. There's a Part One, which is when you have the project evaluated for its eligibility, we, we check that off. And then there's Part Two, where you show the design of the project, the, the plan, and we received approval for that as well. Part Three is when you say, here's the project, it's finished, and we've, we've met the requirements of the historic tax credit program. That is estimated to be valued at two point, little under $2.3 million for the project. Both new market tax credits and historic, historic tax credits are right now selling at about 81 cents on the dollar. So, so a bank or what have you would purchase those at around 81 cents a dollar for both, both programs. Next, we move to the capital campaign.
So that, I can just interject.
Sure.
So that's $7.1 million of federal money right there as part of the total, so it's just under half is federal money. Go ahead.
Next, we move to the capital campaign. We have partnered with the Cultural Arts Center of the Lakes Region, which is a charitable nonprofit that was set up several years ago. It's chaired by Rod Dyer, and its goal was to restore the Colonial Theater. So as we developed this project and as we, as we, as we put together the funding, we, we worked closely with Rod and the board of the Cultural Arts Center, which is a 501(c)(3), charitable nonprofit, to partner with us to be the fundraising arm for the capital campaign. The capital campaign in donations and pledges has raised about $1.5 million. Rate exactly there is, looking at it today, is I think it's 14, 1501 right now that has been raised. Of that, $873,000 is in the, in the bank account of the Cultural Arts Center right now, and the rest is pledges. Of the $600,000 in pledges, there is $500,000 that represents outstanding pledges from two local banks. And then we have a little over $100,000 in outstanding pledges from, from families and businesses. It's about 15 different families and businesses, local businesses that have been paying down their pledge on an, on a, most are about a three-year, three-year pledge, some are a little bit longer than that, some are a little bit shorter. The, the total donors to the project in that, that pot, if you will, it's 350 donors overall. Many families, I, I looked at it this morning in preparation for this meeting, the typical family that donated is around $1,000. We ran, you may recall, we had a seat campaign, save, save a seat campaign during the holiday season last year, and it was very successful, and many people took advantage of that. But that, when you break it out, many, many businesses and, and families have really stepped up to support the project. And so that's how you break down that $1.5 million of the capital campaign. Next.
So 500,000 is two banks?
The two banks, yeah. Then 100, roughly 100 is what I.
They're paying overtime.
Paying overtime, and they continue to pay. We haven't had anyone pay. Next, the project received a tax credit award from the state of New Hampshire, from the Community Development Finance Authority of $650,000. From that, we netted 520. We have to pay a 20% fee to the Community Development Finance Authority. Those New Hampshire tax credits are credits against New Hampshire corporate taxes, and we had 14 businesses purchase those credits. Those have all been sold and, and fundraised. Businesses really step up to, to support the project. It's worth noting, the tax, the New Hampshire tax credit award, that 650 was the biggest at least in the last five years for any economic development or community development project in the state. So that's the next, next pot of money. After that, we have the L-Chip Program, which is the Land and Community Heritage Investment Program, or L-Chip. We received a $500,000 grant, which is a competitive program, but, but Bellknap BDC sought those funds and, and through, through an application about a year and a half ago, maybe a little longer now. And that is for $500,000, which is a grant to the project, to support, support the project. So if you just bear with me for a second here. Next is Community Development Block Grant. The project is a great, very similar to the new market tax credit program. CDBG, which, there's been several projects that are CDBG projects, Community Development Block Grant in Laconia and throughout the, throughout Bellknap County and the region. We're, we've been working with Community Development Finance Authority to, to include a CDBG grant as part of this project. That is for $470,000.
And what's the status of that?
That is, that is, we've done all the environmental work, we've done all the application work. We basically have to, have to put it in its place, probably in, time it so it hits with the, with the new markets. So once we have updates on the new markets, then we, we've put it in its federal review, basically, with Community Development Finance Authority.
But the commitment is in place?
Yeah. Next, we have received funding from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, DES, and also the Lakes Region Planning Commission to support environmental assessment, environmental remediation planning, and other work specific to the environmental work. And those were, those are grant dollars, $200,000.
And that is secured as well?
Next, the Business Finance Authority has worked very closest, closely with us, and this would be a loan to Bellknap BDC. Right now, we're estimating, based on the budget and based on the stack we have proposed in recent months, about a loan of $215,000. We've worked very closely, that number has shifted, based on the budget of the project, and we've just worked very closely with the BFA, their board, their, their staff. Jack Dugan and I have been in close contact with them and will continue to be, but that's a, that's a loan to Bellknap BDC for the project. Yes, Andrew?
What's the, the term and rate on that?
It's going to match the, the city's rate, I think it's, it's, it's under 3%.
And what's the term?
It would be interest-only for seven years, and then we would, we would roll it out, most likely at seven years.
When you say roll it out, what do you mean? Does it?
Well, presumably, the developer would either then turn it into a amortized note or sell the asset in return for cashing out the loan.
Yeah.
Or as part of the loan would be paid for by selling the asset.
Thank you.
Thank you. The new market tax credit structure also requires leveraged lender equity of $15,000, so that's included as well.
I just asked what that was. Sorry, go ahead. Could you explain that?
The.
I know it's only $15,000, but I'm confused.
It is part of the new market tax credit structure, it's a requirement of the, of the program. It's, I understand the confusion with it, but it's, it's part of the, we have to bring in $15,000 of cash into the project.
But from where?
Bellknap BDC.
Okay.
So Mayor, I covered the, there are a couple of soft loans. Would you like me to cover those as well, or just wait?
Soft loans, meaning?
The developed.
They're going to be forgiven.
Yes, the, the fee we did for the.
So what you've covered is the, the hard money, so to speak?
That's right.
And I'll reiterate, and ask for questions, that all of these items have to be at the closing, in cash, no IOUs, no promises, no nothing, including the city. All the money's got to be at the table, or the closing doesn't happen, and everybody walks away with the money they walked into the room with, including us. So if any one of these fails to show up at the closing, the closing doesn't happen. Any questions for Justin on items in the funding stack? Did you have your questions answered, there, Bruce, in terms of the, no, you had a specific question about the pledges and whatnot?
Yeah. There, at, at what point do we approach the outstanding pledges if we have to bring them to the table? If, if that money's not there?
It'll be a bridge loan.
It's a good question.
From the city?
No.
No.
We have worked closely with the local banks, and they would provide bridge financing.
Okay.
That's a great question.
So that, whatever's missing of that 600,000 at the time of the closing will be provided in, in cash at the closing in the terms of bridge loans from actually the banks that owe the money.
Okay.
They'll loan us the money, and then they pay us back $100,000 a year, or whatever the number they agreed to is. Now, it's another matter if, you know, you said there's $100,000 in pledges outstanding from smaller donors.
That's.
So if they don't pay, then that's covered by the bridge loan as well.
That is.
You know, I guess one could argue that's less secure, certainly, than the, than the, the pledges that have been made by the banks.
I, I just wanted to be sure there was a Plan B if the funds weren't there.
Well, and I think the Plan, the Plan B is, and please, I'll ask the, the BDC reps here to step forward on this if necessary, also is, as Justin kind of indicated, the, these numbers are going to shift a little bit between now and closing. And, and so what's the, what's the miscellaneous account? What's, where's the fudge factor in all this? And, and it is, as my understanding is, is that BFA loan he described, which is at $215,000 in the current funding. In other words, if, if $30,000 didn't show up, for whatever reason, from one of these sources, and we were $30,000 short, the, the fudge factor would have to be that loan, would have to go up by $30,000 to have all the money present.
The loan from the city?
No.
No.
The loan from the Business Finance Authority, the BFA loan. That's the floating factor, that's your, your hedge, your, your miscellaneous, whatever you want to call it, your reserve account, is that, they've, they've offered to loan as much as what, 700,000 or 800,000?
782.
782,000. Right now, we're counting on 215 of that.
Yeah.
Okay. And obviously, from BDC's standpoint, the lower that number is, the better, because they, because that's a real loan, that they'll be on the hook for at the end of the seven Okay, anything else for Justin?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Always available to answer any questions, so thank you very much.
So, I guess I, I have just one question. In terms of this BFA loan, we're, we're fairly confident that if we're missing the mark by $30,000 or $75,000, that that loan is going to be available to bridge that gra, gap?
Yes.
And you folks at Bellknap BDC are going to be able to step in and take care of all the commitments that you're going to need to take care of for that loan?
Yes, we, we, their board has approved a loan to this project twice already, actually. And we continue to talk with them on a weekly basis, their staff, and keep in close contact with BFA, the, the Community Development Finance Authority and others. Yeah, I feel, I feel confident that we, we can work with them and we can move efficiently. And that's what they, that's what they do for projects like this throughout the state.
Okay, I'm going to try to wrap this up here in five minutes, and, and like I said, we're, you know, we can take whatever time at another day or later on tonight on this as well. What I'm just handing out to you now is a quick memorandum that I put together today. Apologize if this is confusing, but it, it brings up the question, obviously, is, what are you, what is the council being asked to do at this point in time? We know what the commitment, the standing commitment is via that memorandum resolution passed by council a year and a half ago. And this memorandum here is an attempt for you, as a starting point anyway, to say that at its next meeting on February 25th, we will ask the council to adopt two resolutions, the intent of which is to assure potential investors in the Colonial Theater project. And by that, I mean primarily the large banks that would be investing in this project, the new market tax credit. Okay, that's who we're talking about here. Is to assure potential investors in the project that the city reaffirms the commitments outlined in the resolution passed in September and further, two, two years ago, and further classify, clarifies two important items. One, the city acknowledges that the current construction budget, I went over this a month ago with you, of $9.6 million is void of any allowance for theater equipment, which means rigging, lighting, and sound. And the city agrees to independently specify and pay for said equipment. Okay? The approximate cost, including installation of that equipment, has been estimated at nine hundred thousand dollars. So we're not being asked to come up with the nine hundred thousand dollars right now. What we're being asked to do is to pass a resolution at our next meeting that we can give, that Bellknap Economic Development Council can give to these big investors, to say, the city acknowledges that the nine hundred thousand dollars equipment allowance was taken out of the budget, it's not there, but the city agrees to independently finance the equipment for this project. Okay? So that's what we're asking you for, is that in effect a commitment letter that would go to these investors, saying that that's, that's the case. That the city intends to independently buy the theater equipment at an approximate cost of nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Now, what exact equipment, we have a list, this isn't just a pie in the sky guess, but what exact equipment we buy will be up to the city council to determine at a later date, as to whether it'll be exactly nine hundred thousand, it'll be eight hundred thousand, or a million, or whatever. But I think that's the ballpark, depending on how fancy the lighting is and how fancy the sound system is and all that kind of stuff, there are some variables there. But we know from prices that were specked out last year that the ballpark is about nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay? So that's number one. Number two is, and this is much more complicated, and I, and we don't have time to get into this now, but I'll be happy to tackle this later in the city council meeting you want, or, or next week, or answer any of your questions privately on this, has to do with the rent that, that Counselor Hosmer mentioned earlier, the hundred and forty-four thousand. The current operating structure says, our commitment resolution says that we will commit to paying a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year, twelve thousand dollars a month in rent for the seven years of the project. We're going to have a lease that is being developed at this point in time with the developer that specifies all the arrangements as far as the lease is concerned, okay? But I want to make sure that the city acknowledges the fact that you acknowledge the fact, that you know the fact, that that is, to some extent, a moving target. That, and the reason for that is because the, the, the operating performa that the developer will be using has to meet standards dictated by, A, sound, good business practices, and B, the, the requirements put on us by the investors in the project itself, okay? It has to meet certain financial targets. And the only source of income coming into the performa for the developer on this project is rent. And because we've taken, as I said at our last time we discussed this, we've taken the second and third floors out of the picture for now, out of the project, there's no rent currently in the performa coming in from the second and third floors, although we're working on that. So the only other rent, other than us for the theater, is those four storefronts on Main Street. And I want to make sure we all understand that and acknowledge that as far as the developer is concerned. So depending on how much, if any, rent comes in from the second and third floors, will determine exactly what our rent payment will be at any given time during that seven-year period. Okay? So the more rent that's being paid on the second and third floor, the lower our rent will be, with a baseline of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. If no rent comes in from the second and third floor, then our rent is going to be higher than that. Now, to further complicate this, and we're running out of time here, I, I'm sorry to hit, hit you with, because this is, is a hard concept to grant, is, as I described the circle earlier, the more we charge in interest, the more we have to pay in rent. So one way, Scott and I have had this conversation, one way of reducing our rent is to charge less in interest. If we charge, and for every half point of interest we charge makes twenty thousand dollars a year difference in interest. So if we say we're going to charge three percent versus two and a half percent on the interest, if we charge three, we're going to have to pay twenty thousand dollars more a year in rent. If we charge two and a half, we'll pay twenty thousand dollars less in rent, because it's circular. Okay? Now, right now, the second and third floor are out of the project, there's no income shown on the performa for those. However, the developer is negotiating right now with a possible tenant who's very interested in developing the second and third floor. And an amount is being discussed and whatnot in terms of rent that that, that developer would pay for the second floor. If that comes to fruition, that money coming in from rent would go to reduce our rent, again, with a floor on our rent of what we agreed to earlier, which is twelve thousand dollars a month.
So, Mr. Mayor, can, can you estimate the, what our total exposure would be? You say it could go up from one forty-four per year. Any sense of what the cap might be for the city?
One seventy, it's a guess.
Plus fifty.
Yes. Yeah, I'm guessing something in the range of one seven, probably about twenty-five thousand dollars a year more than what we agreed to originally, if, if, if no rental income comes in from the second floor. And again, that's, a lot of that, and Scott is working through the numbers on this and whatnot in terms of, of making, you know, those are all decisions that we made down the road. All I'm asking right now, what we're asking is for the council next week at our next meeting to, to recognize the responsibility here. Probably what we'll end up doing is sending this whole thing to the finance subcommittee in terms of working out with Scott exactly what terms and whatnot would be best, in the best interest of the city, how much interest to charge, that sort of thing, all the details. And all that will end up in the lease, and you all will have to approve the lease. So there's plenty of control here as far as the city council. All we're asking for at this point in time is a general acknowledgement that, yes, we are committed to the project and we understand this is what our potential liability is. Okay? Any questions further at this point?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned then, at six fifty-eight PM, we'll take a quick break and we'll start on the regular meeting. Thank you.